Thank you very much. Welcome, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Starting with a traditional land acknowledgement statement, municipality of Central Algonquin acknowledges that it is located on the land of the McKee Treaty that was signed by the Wyan Dot and Anishapi Nations, including ancestors of Chipewas of the Thames First Nation. It is also the traditional territory of the Hadwasani, Atawandaranque, and Mississauga Nation. These first nations continue to provide ongoing stewardship of the land and waters in the municipality of Central Algonquin. Any disclosures of pecuniary interest, please, councillors? Seeing none, I ask that we move, uh, for, that we move to closed session, Ms. Wilson? Thank you. Mover and a second or please? Uh, councillor Bachman moves, seconded by deputy mayor Noble. All those in favor? Approved, we are now in closed session. Ms. Wilson? Please. Um, it's a motion, Ms. Wilson, that we have that council adjourned from closed session and return to open session at approximately one four eighteen? If I could get a mover, I have councillor Halpin and I have deputy mayor Noble. Very well, all those in favor?
Yes, Mayor Sloan will be looking for a mover in a second or?
Sorry, councillor Bachman, followed by deputy mayor Noble.
Motion reads, Mayor Sloan, moved by councillor Bachman, seconded by deputy mayor Noble, that confidential report CS one be received as information and that staff proceed as directed by council.
All those in favor? Okay. Um, now we need a mover in a second or for CS two? If I can get a mover, please councillor Halpin? And deputy mayor Noble?
The motion reads, Mayor Sloan, moved by councillor Halpin, seconded by deputy mayor. Sorry, deputy mayor Noble, that confidential report CS two be received as information.
All those in favor? Carried. For CS three, can I get a mover in a second or please? Uh, councillor Watson and councillor Connor.
The motion reads, Mayor Sloan, moved by councillor Watson, seconded by councillor Connors, that confidential report CS three be received as information and that staff proceed as directed by council.
All those in favor? Carried. CS four? Okay, CS four, I need a mover in a second or? Councillor Halpin, councillor Connor.
The motion reads, Mayor Sloan, moved by councillor Halpin, seconded by councillor Connor, that confidential report CS four be received as information.
All those in favor? Carried. If I could get a mover in a second or for CS five, councillor Watson and councillor Bachman.
The motion reads, Mayor Sloan, moved by councillor Watson, seconded by councillor Bachman, that confidential report CS five be received as information.
All those in favor? Carried. CS six, if I could get a mover? And a second or please? Or councillor Halpin and councillor Connor, thank you.
Motion reads, Mayor Sloan, moved by councillor Halpin, seconded by councillor Connor, that report CS six be received as information.
All those in favor? Passed. CS seven, if I could get a, uh, uh, sorry mover in a second or please, CS? So deputy mayor has moved, second or councillor Halpin?
The motion reads, Mayor Sloan, moved by deputy mayor Noble, seconded by councillor Halpin, that confidential report CS seven be received as information and that staff proceed as directed by council.
All those in favor? Thank you. CS eight, if I could get a mover, please? Councillor Bachman, second or councillor Watson?
The motion reads, Mayor Sloan, moved by councillor Bachman, seconded by councillor Watson, whereas the council of the corporation of the municipality of Central Algonquin is committed to affordability, including through the diversification of the asset assessment base, and whereas the employment lands identified in Schedule K of the municipality of Central Algonquin official plan are high-ranking employment lands in the province of Ontario, primed for economic development. Now therefore, the council of the corporation of the municipality of Central Algonquin direct staff to engage the services of MHBC Planning, Urban Design, and Landscape Architect for the completion of an employment lands zoning bylaw funded from the working capital reserve.
All those in favor? Hey, um, CS nine, could I get a mover in a second or please? Kalpin, councillor Halpin and deputy mayor Noble, please?
The motion reads, Mayor Sloan, moved by councillor Halpin, seconded by deputy mayor Noble, that confidential report CS nine be received as information.
All those in favor? Hey, uh, CS ten, if I could get a mover in a second or councillor Connor and councillor Watson, thank you.
There is, the motion reads, Mayor Sloan, moved by councillor Connor, seconded by councillor Watson, that confidential report CS ten be received as information and that staff proceed as directed by council.
All those in favor? Approved, CS eleven, if I could get a mover? Councillor Halpin, second or councillor Bachman?
The motion reads, Mayor Sloan, moved by councillor Halpin, seconded by councillor Bachman, that confidential report CS eleven be received as information.
All those in favor? Carried, CS twelve, could get a mover? Councillor Watson, second or councillor Halpin?
The motion reads, Mayor Sloan, moved by councillor Watson, seconded by councillor Halpin, that confidential report CS twelve be received as information.
All those in favor? Carried. Um, bylaws.
Procedurally, if I may, Mayor Sloan, we have one bylaw to, um, get council approval on for the appointment of the committee of adjustment. You do have a committee of adjustment meeting at six fifty PM this evening.
Can I get a mover? Councillor Graham, second or councillor Bachman?
The motion reads, Mayor Sloan, moved by councillor Graham, seconded by councillor Bachman, that by law twenty seven fifty-two be read a first and a second time?
Okay. All those in favor? Carried. Second motion, uh, I need a mover in a second or for the second motion, councillor Halpin? Councillor Bachman?
The motion reads, Mayor Sloan, moved by councillor Halpin, seconded by councillor Bachman, that by law twenty seven fifty-two be read a third time and finally passed.
All those in favor? Thank you. Now, we have recess here and we're just, we're, we're going to need a, a, a first and a second for recess and then we're in recess? Okay, we're learning here, folks. Um, so I'd like to recess the meeting if I could get a mover? Councillor, uh, councillor Connor, and a second or councillor Halpin?
Mayor Sloan, motion reads, moved by councillor Connors, seconded by councillor Halpin, that the regular meeting of council dated Monday, December the twelfth, twenty twenty-two be recessed at four twenty-five PM and that council agrees to reconvene said meeting at seven PM.
All those in favor? Or recessed? Thank you very much.
Is the, is the live stream?
Thank you very much. Um, welcome back, everyone. Um, I'd like to reconvene the meeting, um, beginning with the adoption of the minutes from the previous meeting. Any discussion or can I get a mover in a second or? Councillor Bachman and councillor Halpin? All those in favor? Okay, so moved. Moving along to delegation, seeing we have none. Uh, I'll move to employee recognition. Um, it's my honor as the new mayor to read the names of the full-time staff and volunteer firefighters who have contributed a significant part of their lives to the betterment of Central Algonquin, the corporation and the people that live here. Um, I think that, uh, we have, um, a very, um, a dedicated team and it's a honor for me to be able to read out some of the names of those that have been here a significant amount of time. For fifteen years, we have Mike Bond and Andrew Sliegers, twenty years Trent Lucas, twenty-five years Lloyd Perrin, thirty years Stephanie Mayus and Diane Wilson. As for the volunteer fighter, firefighter, firefighters, our ten-year recipients are Jason Bod, Todd Davies, Jonathan Finch, Andrew Hurst, Alex McPherson, Dave Oliver, Blair Rogers, fifteen years Scott Ball, Jason Clark, Brody Gollum, Steve McDonald, and Todd Ward, twenty years of service, Tim Coplanis and Quinn Moise. Twenty-five years of service is Todd Waldeck. And lastly, our thirty years of dedication from our volunteer firefighters are Mel Bolsterly and James Farquhar. On behalf of the council, I'd like to congratulate them and ask if we could just take a moment and? Thank you very much, correspondence? First item on the agenda, twenty-two thousand twenty-three Spring Dream Lottery, five-two dash six-three Compass Trail Port Stanley. Correspondence has been received. Do any of the councillors have any comments or questions? Seems relatively straightforward. Um, if I could get a mover in a second or for this piece, please? Uh, councillor Connors and seconded by deputy mayor Noble?
The motion reads, Mayor Sloan, moved by councillor Connors, seconded by deputy mayor Noble, that the council of the corporation of the municipality of Central Algonquin has no objections to a request for a dream home lottery to be held at unit fifty-two sixty-three Compass Trail, Port Stanley, in support of London's hospitals.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. All those in favor? Motion's carried. Uh, moving to information received, the first item on the agenda is from the Catfish Creek Conservation Authority. Council have any comments, questions? Second item, Bill twenty-three, the More Homes Built Faster Act, a letter from Kettle Creek Conservation Authority with their comments on Bill twenty-three. Comments? Number three, correspondence from the Thames Valley District School Board, related to an amendment to the existing holding zone in southeast St. Thomas. Comments or questions? Number four, Catfish Creek Conservation Authority. Uh, information about the preliminary levy for twenty twenty-three and a draft budget summary, which we have received, if I could have a mover in a second or for the information? Excuse me, councillor Halpin, seconded by deputy mayor Noble.
The motion reads, Mayor Sloan, moved by councillor Halpin, seconded by deputy mayor Noble, that correspondence items number one through number four be received as information and filed.
All those in favor? So carried. Next on the agenda for the Central Algonquin Planning Office, we have CEP dot five-four-two-two, a consent application for four-two-four-nine-six water tower line. Questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, can I get a mover, please? Councillor Halpin in a second or councillor Bachman?
The motion reads, Mayor Sloan, moved by councillor Halpin, seconded by councillor Bachman, that report CEP fifty-four twenty-two reconsent application four-two-four-nine-six water tower line, one zero six eight seven eight eight Ontario Limited be received as information and the council has no objections to consent application E ninety-three twenty-two, subject to the following recommended conditions, approval of a zoning bylaw amendment to prohibit residential dwellings on the retained lands and to permit rural residential use on the severed lands, a drainage reassessment be done if necessary at the owner's expense and a copy of the reference plan be provided to the municipality of Central Algonquin.
All those in favor? Carried. Item number two, uh, consent application, read two-five-five Hill Street. Council have any questions or comments? Seeing none, could I have a mover in a second or please? Uh, deputy mayor Noble, seconded by councillor Watson, thank you.
The motion reads, Mayor Sloan, moved by deputy mayor Noble, seconded by councillor Watson, that report CEP fifty-five twenty-two reconsent application two-five-five Hill Street, Connie Anne Blyde be received as information and the council has no objections to consent application E ninety-six twenty-two, subject to the following recommended conditions, confirmation that municipal services for both the severed and retained lots have been completed to the satisfaction of the Director of Asset Management and Development Services. Confirmation that the existing shed on the severed lot has been removed or relocated to the satisfaction of the chief building official. The applicant enters into an agreement with the municipality of Central Algonquin to address administrative, technical, and financial matters relative to the development of the subject lands, the payment of cash in lieu of the dedication of five percent of the land for parkland purposes, a drainage reassessment be done if necessary at the owner's expense, and a copy of the reference plan be provided to the municipality of Central Algonquin.
All those in favor? Carried. Moving along to, uh, CEP fifty-seven twenty-two zoning bylaw amendment report three-nine-two Edith Cavell Boulevard, if I could get a mover? And a second or councillor Halpin and councillor Bachman?
The motion reads, Mayor Sloan, moved by councillor Halpin, seconded by councillor Bachman, that report CEP fifty-seven twenty-two, real application to amend the village of Port Stanley bylaw number fifteen oh seven, three-nine-two Edith Cavell Boulevard, Steve and Mary Ellen Defazio be received as information and that direction be given by council to prepare a site-specific draft amendment to the zoning bylaw in support of the proposed residential use at three-nine-two Edith Cavell Boulevard, which may be legally described as registered plan number one seventeen, part of lot twenty-five, south side of Front Street, municipality of Central Algonquin. And further that a date for a public meeting will be established in accordance with Ontario Regulation five-four-five oh six as amended.
Thank you. All those in favor? Carried. Thank you. The next number four is zoning bylaw amendment report for one-one, one-nine-one Carlo Road. If I could get a mover? And a second or councillor Connors and councillor Halpin, thank you.
Motion reads, Mayor Sloan, moved by councillor Connors, seconded by councillor Halpin, that report CEP fifty-eight, application to amend the village of Port Stanley bylaw fifteen oh seven one-nine-one Carlo Road, the corporation of the municipality of Central Algonquin be received as information and that direction be given by council to prepare a site-specific draft amendment to the zoning bylaw that reflects the proposed revised property configuration as at one-nine-one Carlo Road, which may be legally described as part of lots four and five, north of Smith Street, part of lots two, three, four, and five, south of George Street, part of lots one and two, west of Water Street, part of Water Street, closed by bylaw seven thirty-five, registered as instrument PS four-six-six, part of George Street, closed by bylaw seven thirty-four, registered as instrument PS four-six-six-five, closed by judges ordered, registered as instrument one-six-eight-seven-seven-four, registered plan forty-nine, Port Stanley, municipality of Central Algonquin. And further that a date for a public meeting be established in accordance with Ontario Regulation five-four-five oh six as amended.
Thank you. All those in favor? So carried. Next on the agenda, item number five, CEP fifty-nine dot, or two-two, is a follow-up report to a public Zoom meeting which was held regarding a plan of condominium and zoning bylaw amendment regarding two-seventy-nine Hill Street. We have a comment and we have information from the planner who's with us. I'd like to start by asking any of the councillors if they have any questions. Councillor Graham?
I have some definite questions and concerns. Uh, my concerns, it's currently zoned, R one in Yarmouth, which allows for single detached dwellings and accessory buildings on residential lots. The compatibility of character was identified by staff as a concern initially and alternatives were given to the owner without attempts to compromise. But the owner developer, uh, was not interested in that. There's direction in the provincial policy statement to avoid development which may cause environmental concerns. We're filling in part of the ravine that's a natural heritage and natural hazard area. So we're basically disrupt, disrupting that heritage land. In the official plan, part of it states that we should maintain, restore, and enhance ecological integrity and biodiversity of natural heritage systems, and we don't seem to be doing that. The PPS states that development should be directed away from natural hazard areas. And according to the PPS, there needs to be an illustrated need for an amendment for a new development. And with all the developments that we do have, by my count, and I'm sure Mr. Perrin could could, uh, verify that or correct me on that, there seems to be about six hundred units, not including the development at the Water Tower, Kokomo Compass Trail, Prespa Development and Lindhurst, Duckderry Home Development and Union, so I don't really see where that definite need becomes illustrated for that amendment to the zoning bylaw.
Thank you councillor Graham. Through Mr. Shipway.
Through Mr. Mayor, Mr. McClure will respond.
Thank you, um, Mr. Mayor. Um, as I think has been indicated previously in the original staff report and the follow-up report, um, by, I guess, all accounts, the staff's position remains the same, the policy direction that's been established by the province, the county's official plan, the municipality's official plan. Um, it, the, the, uh, proposal would conform to those, those policies and that policy direction. Uh, sufficient studies were done to the satisfaction of the Kettle Creek Conservation Authority and staff that addressed those, uh, concerns that were, were raised. Uh, the application itself is within a designated, uh, residential area. Yes, there's a, a component of the, uh, lands on the municipal right-of-way that, uh, uh, were studied, uh, to, to address the access concerns as per the, uh, PPS, uh, infrastructure, uh, is permitted within those natural heritage, natural hazard, um, uh, areas, subject to appropriate studies being undertaken. And, uh, as was indicated, uh, through the previous staff report and the follow-up report, uh, that's on the agenda, uh, it met all, uh, the, the provincial criteria to the satisfaction of staff and Kettle Creek Conservation Authority.
Thank you councillor Graham.
I think so. Uh, we, I would like to ask that we defer this decision and this vote so that we have a chance to have people come in person rather than at the Zoom meeting and talk about it and give their opinions on it. I think there's more because we have only been, uh, here for five days now, that there's a lot more information that we need to look at to make this decision and make a very informed decision on this development.
Thank you councillor Graham, uh, to the, oh, excuse me, uh, councillor Halpin, you wish to speak?
Uh, I was, that had been the question that I had been waiting to ask as well was that, that's feedback I've had from many people in the public is that they wish they had been able to speak to our current council and that they wish they had been able to be here in person to do so. So, uh, I, I guess my question is, are we going to fall short of any timelines on this project if we have a second meeting?
Thank you councillor Halpin. Um, I'll, I'll pass that over to Mr. Shipway.
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, ultimately, the disposition of this item is that the discussion of council, it may deal with it how, however it likes. Um, at this point in time, I think you would be in a position where an applicant would be able to appeal a non-decision. However, that's not a given, that's just based on application timelines.
Thank you, Mr. Shipway. Other councillors have any comments that they would like to offer? Deputy mayor Noble?
I just want to make comment, if we defer this based on the, the information we've been given, um, if we defer it, we're just going to give people an opportunity to share their feelings about it. But I don't know that we can vote against it and that this won't just delay the inevitable.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Noble. Other councillors, councillor Graham?
I think it'll also give us an opportunity though for all of us to delve into them and make sure that we're fully understanding all the information and the implications that are going to happen up in that area for this development.
Thank you councillor Graham. Uh, councillor Bachman, please?
Based on the professionals that we've employed to make these decisions that bring it to us, such as the KCCA and our planning committee, we, I don't feel we're in a position to negate their study and their professionalism. Um, I'm seeing the only thing that's going to sway or defer any delay in the decision is simply a motion rather than fact. And the facts are, I think, right in front of us.
Thank you councillor Bachman. Councillor Graham, do you wish to speak to that?
Uh, I, I do actually have a couple of other questions, so, um, in the official plan, it says that medium density developments are supposed to have access to an arterial or collector road. Is Hill Street deemed an arterial or collected road? Perhaps, Mr. Perrin?
Uh, within the confines of the official plan, uh, that is, Hill Street is not an arterial road, however, uh, medium density, uh, we would look at that as a much higher density than what's being proposed. Uh, there's, uh, other condo developments that abut and access local streets like on Compass Trail. Uh, currently that is, uh, considered a local, local street as well, so, uh, while that's what the OP states as a policy, it has to be looked at on its own merit. And just a supplemental to that, uh, Mayor Sloan, uh, there was a traffic impact study that was completed that was done, uh, within the context of full buildup, buildout of this area, uh, that didn't identify any traffic issues.
Thank you, Mr. Perrin. Councillor Graham?
Mr. Mayor, through you, um, was that impact, traffic impact study dead in twenty twenty-two?
Mr. Perrin?
Uh, through you, uh, Mayor Sloan, uh, no, it was not. However, as stated, that, uh, traffic study was done within the context of the full buildout of that entire area, so, uh, Sunset Bluffs as well as, uh, the, uh, landings development. We knew what that, uh, that development was going to look like and, uh, theoretic, uh, traffic, uh, uh, movements were utilized within the traffic study. So there, uh, while it was not done in twenty twenty-two, the information that was used to prepare that traffic study was relevant based on the existing conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Perrin. Councillor Graham?
Mr. Mayor, through you, and was that, what year was that traffic study done?
Uh, I believe it was in twenty eighteen. However, the development, uh, for landings was already approved. Uh, so we knew the exact, uh, number of dwelling units, the density and landing Sunset Plus was pretty much at full buildout, so, uh, a traffic engineer, who was a professional engineer in, uh, the province of Ontario, looked at that and was reviewed by staff and, uh, predicated their traffic study on how this, this site would impact um, based on that theoretical, which tends to be on a conservative side based on actuals.
Thank you, Mr. Perrin. Follow-up councillor Graham?
Mayor Sloan, so is there any plans for consideration of the pedestrian? In that area, sidewalks?
Mr. Perrin?
Uh, there would not be a requirement to, uh, install sidewalks, uh, on Hill Street as a result of this development. Similar to, there was not a requirement to install sidewalks on, uh, Larry or Beamish Street as a result of Sunset Bluffs or, uh, on East Road as a result of, uh, Compass Trail.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have a question through, um, through staff, uh, about specifically concerning Bill C twenty-three, or is it C twenty-three? With Bill twenty-three, excuse me, C is federal, uh, which has been given assent in the House. Um, and, and, and has taken, you know, was put in after the municipal election and before our meeting tonight. When consideration is given, um, looking through When consideration is given, looking through the act here about consent applications. Public bodies that have an interest in the decision. Could someone clarify for me what a public body is, please?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So Bill twenty-three effectively took away the ability for individual residents to appeal. Consents and minor variances that would not be applicable in this situation. The ability for a third party and a budding neighbor. Community organization group can still appeal an official plan or zoning by law amendment. Specifically to your question, but those public agencies are generally specified by regulation and those typically would entail utilities. And and other governmental organizations.
Thank you. Discussion from other counselors, please. If there's discussion from other counselors. Counselor Halpin.
I did go to see the property with some of the residents nearby and it is very beautiful and I understand why they're frustrated. But I am inclined to think that Deputy Mayor Noble is probably correct that we would be costing the municipality money in litigation. By refusing to put something through that ultimately does seem to fit all the criteria.
Thank you, Counselor Halpin. Counselor Graham, please.
It states that there's no requirement for the current house to hook up to the municipal services at the time of installation. Does that mean that they'll be required to hook up at a later date?
You said to me, but I think you meant through me. So that I'll put through to whomever CAO suggests. Thank you.
And inevitably, that will be up to council to decide that in the in the past. So the installation of services typically is done by bylaw and council would. Lay out the criteria with respect to connection to those services and payment in the future in that bylaw. In the past, there has not been a requirement to connect. However, there is a requirement to pay at the time of connection and that cost is. Based on the actual construction cost divided by the number of units that that service is being serviced. By and it's indexed annually based on the construction price index.
Thank you, Mr. Perrin.
And just as a final comment through you, Mr. Mayor, I do believe that there are a lot of different parts of the official plan and of the PPS that this does. This development does not comply with. Again, I would request that we defer this so that everyone becomes very familiar with both of those. Areas, the provincial policy statement and the official plan with regards to this development.
Thank you. Any discussion on the potential of changing this to a deferment? Consideration by counselors for discussion, please.
Having.
Counselor Halpin, go ahead. No, don't be.
Thank you. Having just asked about the possibility of doing a second meeting for the people who would have preferred to meet with our council rather than the former council. And hearing that we might be at a point where deferring it any farther could bring it to tribunal. It seems as if deferring it without even a plan to have a meeting would be bringing on that risk of a tribunal without even the benefit of having further conversation.
Thank you, Counselor Halpin. Any comments on Counselor Halpin's comments?
The only, sorry, through you, Mr. Mayor, the only thing I would say is that, I mean, if if they received. The application or notice of the application was completed back in April. I don't want to be making a decision based on fear that we're afraid that something is going to go. I want to make sure that we're hearing our residents. That's what I think all of us were elected on. Less than two months ago. So I want to really make sure that we are, that everyone has reviewed the official plan. With regards to this, that everyone has reviewed the PPS with regards to this and is very aware of what it is stating.
Thank you, Counselor Graham. For next steps, are you considering a motion, raising a motion for a deferral?
I would like, yeah, I would raise a motion to defer this until the year.
Counselor Graham has asked for a deferral. Can I ask the deputy clerk for our next steps, please?
Thank you. Procedurally, we will need a seconder on that motion before we can put it on the floor.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Do we have a second or for Counselor Graham's motion? Things we do not, I will now go to the motion, CEP five nine two two. Follow up report to the public meeting plan of condominium and zoning by law, two seven nine Hill Street. I need a mover, please. Counselor Halpin and a second or Counselor Watson?
The motion reads, Mr. Mayor, moved by Counselor Halpin, seconded by Counselor Watson, that report CEP fifty-nine twenty-two. Reapplication to amend the village of Port Stanley by law fifteen oh seven two seventy-nine Hill Street follow up report. Morgan, John and Ada Pavia be received as information and that council support the proposed amendment to the village of Port Stanley. By law fifteen oh seven, as it is consistent with the two thousand and twenty provincial policy statement, the county of Elven official plan. And the municipality of Central Elgin official plan.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Item number six, CEP sixty twenty-two draft plan of subdivision report and zoning by law amendment, three seven seven one nine Lake Line. Could I get a mover, please?
May I ask a question about it?
Yes, please. Sorry, I should have asked for discussion, Counselor Halpin. My apologies.
Thank you. I do see noted here that there was no attainability analysis and. There hasn't been any commitment in terms of density. Is there a reason that staff chose not to pursue that?
Thank you, Counselor Halpin. Through Mr. McClure.
Thank you, your worship, through you to Counselor Halpin. Ultimately, the official plan and the provincial policy statement, the county's official plan puts in affordability targets. As part of that, unfortunately. There's limited opportunity for staff to go to enforce or require certain things to be undertaken. As noted in the in the report itself, the applicant had originally submitted an application. For just single detached. Through discussions and iterations throughout the process, staff were able to have the the applicant. Include some semi-detached and townhouse developments as well to allow for a little bit more flexibility. And potentially more affordable options as part of the plan. However, from a provincial perspective. On affordability. There there hasn't been a commitment from the applicant that any of these units are going to be affordable. By the province's definition. So in the absence of of providing some funding or having council require. Some of those things, there's there's limited opportunities for for staff to to require that. I guess the other thing to note as well is that it's also being flagged for the the purpose of the county. Because the county is the approval authority on plans of subdivision in in the municipality of Central Elgin. So that's something that they're going to need to, I guess, reconcile as well, given the fact that they have their own affordability criteria. And targets at the county level as well too.
Counselor Halpin.
So it's staff opinion that there's not a way for us to enforce this and that we should disregard that component and count on Elgin County to enforce.
Mr. McClure.
Thank you, through you to Counselor Halpin. I mean, ultimately, if this is something that the council would like to see. I mean, there's part of the zoning by law amendment. Public meeting, those those comments can be raised and brought forward and that could be something that the. Applicant may consider through through the process. So it's definitely something that council can raise. To see whether or not it would be something that the applicant would be amenable to to adding. Or including some of those things, but as I indicated, within the the official plan itself. And that there's there's limited mechanisms for for staff to to require the. The individual landowner to to put in affordable units.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Counselor Noble or Deputy Mayor Noble?
This property, does it, is it adjacent to the, say, Kokomo property? And I'm just wondering with any of that, if there's. Opportunity for a different entrance exit into that area down in the backside of Port Stanley. Drawing a blank to the street name.
Steph, for comment, please.
I can I can start and then potentially Mr. Perrin may want to step in as well. This is not adjacent to the. The Kokomo development is actually kind of north and behind the the Kettle Creek Public School. North of the Kettle Creek. Golf and Country Club. So it's the bit of the the lands that's kind of down in a bit of a gully where you have lake line that kind of goes up. And around the parcel of land. This is where they're proposing as part of the official plan update process. The applicant had come forward as well with the a development proposal for redevelopment of the Kettle Creek Golf Course as well. To the south that this would be incorporated into and would ultimately then. Have an additional access further down on Carlo. But this particular subdivision, while it has a stub road that would allow for that eventual extension. At a later date, right now on on Lake Line, it's at that Carlo Warren Street intersection, just to just to the west.
Thank you, Mr. Perrin.
Through you, Mayor Sloan. So if I understood Deputy Mayor Noble's question, it's really with respect to have a secondary access. From George Street West. No, that would not be able to happen either through this plan of subdivision or the one to the south. Because there's not a a street connection that would connect Kokomo north into the golf course property. That plan of subdivision has already been set and approved. So a connection north into the golf course, Kettle Creek Golf and Country Club. You know, at the time of development, there's no opportunity there. There is a street stub out the east end of Kokomo. That goes up to the Ultramar property. So that that is an opportunity in the future. Subject to the municipality acquiring that that land. However, at this point, staff would not recommend acquiring that land in the absence of knowing the full environmental. Picture of the Ultramar site. To ensure that we're not taking on undue risk with from environmental contamination on that site. We are aware that Ultramar is undertaking a phase two environmental on that property now. And we have every intention on, you know, reaching out to Ultramar to try to gauge and understand what that level of contamination is.
Thank you, Mr. Perrin. Deputy Mayor Noble. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay, if I could get a mover and a second or please. Deputy Mayor Noble moves and. Sorry, Counselor Connor seconds.
The motion reads, Mayor Sloan, moved by Deputy Mayor Noble, seconded by Counselor Connors, that report CEP sixty twenty-two. Reapplication for draft plan of subdivision approval, three seven seven one nine Lake Line, Strathroy Strathroy Turf Farms be received as information. And the council support in principle the proposed draft plan of subdivision file number thirty-four TCE twenty-one oh one on lands known. Owned by Strathroy Turf Farms, which lands may be legally described as part of clergy reserve lot D, north of the lake road. And part of James Beg Lots fourteen and fifteen, registered plan number twenty MIDD and part of road allowance between lots fourteen and fifteen. North of the lake road and all of Lot T, register plan thirty-nine in the municipality of Central Elgin. And further that a date for a public meeting be established in accordance with Ontario Regulation five four four oh six as amended.
I thank you to the deputy clerk. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Next on the agenda for information, official plan amendment and zoning by law. CEP sixty-two twenty-two. Did I miss one? Oh, my goodness. Apologies. Think I was new to the game. Number seven, Central Elgin Planning, application to amend the village of Port Stanley by law. Number one five zero seven three seven seven one nine Lake Line. For discussion? Comments, questions? Seeing none, could I have a mover, please? Counselor Watson, second or Counselor Halpin?
The motion reads, Mayor Sloan, moved by Counselor Watson, seconded by Counselor Halpin, that report CEP sixty-one twenty-two. Reapplication to amend the village of Port Stanley by law fifteen oh seven three seven seven one nine Lake Line, Strathroy Turf Farms be received as information. And that direction be given by council to prepare a site-specific draft amendment to the village of Port Stanley zoning by law. In association with the proposed draft plan of subdivision file number thirty-four TCE twenty-one oh one on lands owned by Strathroy Turf Farms. Which lands may be legally described as part of clergy reserve lot D, north of the lake road and part of James Beg Lots fourteen and fifteen. Registered plan number twenty MIDD and part of road allowance between lots fourteen and fifteen, north of the lake road and all of Lot T. Registered plan thirty-nine in the municipality of Central Elgin. And further that a date for a public meeting be established in accordance with Ontario Regulation five four five oh six as amended.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Number eight on our agenda, CEP sixty-two twenty-two official plan amendment zoning by law regarding amendment report. For information for four one zero Sunset Drive. Comments or questions? Counselor Halpin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. I have spoken with the developer about this and looked over their plans to some extent. And although I see that staff disrecommends this as they feel that we already have enough land zoned right now for residential. I feel that this is different from much of our current residential use. And as we've seen in most of the things that we've passed so far this evening. Most of what we are approving is single houses or semi-detached. And we really don't see many instances of developers looking to put in, say, mid-rise apartment buildings, four stories or six stories. Things like this that have elevators are much more useful as you get people that have accessibility and accommodation needs. They can be more attainable and it is my understanding that that's the developer's intention. And one of the biggest complaints that we've had in the past with mid-rise apartments is that often developers push them in as a requirement in the corner of a space. And ultimately, if it's not on an arterial road, it doesn't turn out to be useful for the people that can't afford or are not for various reasons using a vehicle. So to have this offered as something that they're interested to develop on Sunset where it's reasonably easy for people to access. Although it isn't residential and although we do have lots of residential, I think that this is a case where it would be useful to our community.
Thank you, Counselor Halpin. Other counselors? Before we do, I would ask Mr. McClure to comment on Counselor Halpin's comments, please.
Thank you, your worship, through you to Counselor Halpin. As per my report, these lands. And I guess the residential land supply was extensively studied through the official plan update. We have an oversupply of residential lands and ultimately, the the provincial policy statement is very specific on. And the province is very specific on the amount of lands that are kind of permitted and required as part of those official plan updates and review. Ultimately, too, it comes into the question of of, I guess, orderly development. And whether or not you're you're potentially undermining other residential lands that are suited in favor of of lands that were not really considered. I guess with respect to the types of residential developments and being mainly singles and semis. There are a number of applications that have been approved in in, I guess, Port Stanley specifically. That you do have apartment apartment type living in Kokomo. There are a number of, I believe, four apartment units that are going in as part of that development. The Landing Subdivision, they have a six-story apartment that's been approved through the off the East Road. um off the East Road uh that that uh has gone through site plan approval as well. Uh, it is something that we're seeing more uh frequently now and uh we we uh intend to see more of. Uh, that was um brought forward through the the new official plan as well, where the demographics and the market changes are are showing that there's a transition, especially in uh Central Logan, where it's typically been about ninety percent a single detached uh residential dwellings that that that's gonna dwindle down to probably about sixty uh percent uh by the by the life of the plan and we're gonna see more of the medium and higher density uh developments. So, well, I think um it's something that we haven't seen um as much in the past. I I do think it's something that we will see more of i- in the future and ultimately, at this time, um, there wouldn't be justification for removal of the commercial designation, office professional designation in this area uh to to support additional residential development, given the the recent studies that we've undertaken.
Follow up councillor Halpin.
Thank you for your response. Um. It's my opinion and I'll grant that I am not a planning expert, but it is uh my observation that there hasn't yet been a really successful and tenable rental situation in that office space and with nothing really similar to it nearby, it's not necessarily likely that that's going to happen. Meanwhile, we do have um all of the facilities running right up to that property so that with Bill twenty-three and not collecting development charges and so forth on this, uh, it wouldn't be a question of how we can afford to make sure that sewer and so forth arrives to that property. Uh, I do have people communicating to me from Southdale and Lyndale right now that they're struggling with um a food desert situation and the nearest bus stop comes to within only three hundred meters of that space. So uh allowing greater density of people of a similar interest in that area would make it much more likely that we can effectively remedy that situation and not seeing any reason that the office space is useful as is and seeing that uh it's well situated for it and their studies have all seemed to be in agreement by the developer. Uh, I would like to move that we uh act against staff's recommendation and allow this development to go forward.
Thank you, councillor Halpin. I think it's just an information item, but I'm gonna pass over to 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 Mr. Shipway. Thank you.
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor. At this point in time, this is just to schedule the statutory public meeting. So that's the only recommendation is to move forward in the process and have the public meeting. Uh, I believe after that, uh typically, regardless of what the recommendation is, uh, Mr. McClure, correct me if I'm wrong. Uh, a report would come forward uh with the requisite zoning bylaw and official plan amendment, as we've done on other applications that have been recommended to not approve. Is that correct, Mr. McClure?
Thank you. Uh, yes, ultimately, as with the previous um reports, uh, this is staff recommendation based on the information that was presented. Uh, ultimately, the next step would be the scheduling of the public meeting to so that council and and the public can uh provide comment on the the draft uh official plan amendment that would be required and the the zoning bylaw amendment. Uh, also to uh for the the applicant an opportunity to to respond to staff's report and any other uh questions that council may have on the application as well. Uh, and then following that that public meeting, that's when the the uh, I guess, draft amendment uh or or bylaw would be put on a subsequent meeting of council for 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 council's decision. Uh, ultimately, as as a result of that, um, council, as a public meeting, if there is additional direction that uh council provided staff were part or there was a requirement for a follow-up staff report, that's when um uh staff would would undertake that that work and then present it again back to to council at at a subsequent meeting.
Thank you, councillor Halpin. Okay. Thank you for the perspective and information um regarding concerning this file. Um, like you, it's a service lot, it has a good location and I look forward to the public meeting. Um, that said, we have a for information today. Uh, can I get a mover in a second or on the motion, please? Uh, councillor Halpin and councillor Bachman.
Mayor Sloan, motion reads, moved by councillor Halpin, seconded by councillor Bachman, that reports CEP sixty-two, reapplication to amend the municipality of Central and official plan and the township of Yarmouth by law for ten Sunset Street Quincy Developments, we received this information and that direction be given by council to prepare a site-specific draft amendment to the municipality of Central and official play and plan and the township of Yarmouth zoning by law for the proposed residential use on lands located at four ten Sunset Drive, which may be legally described as concession six, part of lot three, registered plant eleven R four 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 six, parts one to eight, municipality of Central Logan. And further that a date for a public meeting be scheduled and established in accordance with the Ontario regulation five four three oh six and five four five oh six as amended.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. All those in favor. Carried. Moving on to reports, our first reporter is from the chief administrative officer, Mr. Shipway.
Do you, Mr. Mayor, the reports before you for an analysis and informational purposes, staff are happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions from council? I have a question. Um, with respect to to the bill, um, it's received royal assent, so it's it's law. It talked about how it removed the prohibition on request to amend official plans within two years. Could could I get some more information on how that might affect uh might affect us or consequences to that decision, please?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I'll give it a go and then Mr. McClure can jump in, but generally, there is a prohibition on uh amendments to official plan within two years of an official plan update. Uh, however, as long as council consented to it and provided a reason, it it wasn't actually a prohibition. So now that's completely removed. Mr. McClure.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, just to build on uh what Mr. Shipway was was explaining there. Uh, they the prohibition only took effect on brand-new official plans, so uh not comprehensive official plan updates uh for the municipality. That was our intent uh to have a brand-new official plan through this process so that um official plan amendments wouldn't be permitted without council consent. Uh, ultimately, it the it was put in place in order, uh, I guess, to allow um municipalities time to implement the zoning or create the zoning to implement the the policy direction in the official plan. So it was the uh, I guess, the province's way of 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 kind of putting a pause on that. Uh, ultimately, now, as soon as the county a- approves the uh, the adopted official plan that uh from back in August, um, a private developer landowner could come in and request an official plan amendment to 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 update it without council's consent. So um, that that that's really more procedural, that it would allow an individual owner to to come in and and uh, yeah, I guess, request a change to the to the official plan.
Thank you, Mr. McClure. Do you have anything else to add with respect to C uh Bills twenty-three and your position as a planner? Um, any analysis you'd like to offer council, please?
Uh, a- at this point, I don't have the too much more to to add to what was provided in uh Mr. Shipway's report on on the agenda. Um, the the intent is that we'll probably come back with more, um, uh, I guess, a separate report on some more of the the planning and legislative changes that the the impacts that it may have on the municipality at uh in the at the January meeting, we're still kind of working through some of the the finer details and and some of the um, I guess, aspects um uh in the in the bill uh still need to be, uh, I guess, implemented through regulation. So um, there's there's certain things that uh we'll need to have have addressed. Uh, but there'll be a more fulsome report on that in the January council meeting.
Thank you, councillors. Any questions? Could I get a mover, please? Councillor Halpin, second or deputy mayor? Noble.
Motion reads Mayor Sloan, moved by councillor Halpin, seconded by deputy mayor Noble, that report CAO thirty-three twenty-two, reanalysis of Bill twenty-three, More Homes Built Faster Act twenty twenty-two, we receive for information.
Thank you. Uh, councillors, all those in favor? Opposed. So carried. Uh, moving along to our next report, which is from the Director of Infrastructure and Community Services. First item, ICS twenty-six twenty-two, the Norton Drain Abandonment. Do any of the councillors have comments or questions? Seeing none, could I get a mover in a second, please? Councillor Bachman and seconded by councillor Halpin.
The motion reads Mayor Sloan, moved by councillor Bachman, seconded by councillor Halpin, that report ICS twenty-six twenty-two, re Norton Drain Abandonment, we receive for information and that council direct staff to commence Drainage Act procedures to abandon the Norton Drain.
All those in favor? Opposed. Carried. Item number two, ICS twenty-seven twenty-two, prior drain petition. Comments by council? Seeing none, could I have a mover, please? Councillor Connors and a second or councillor Halpin?
The motion reads Mayor Sloan, moved by councillor Connors, seconded by councillor Halpin, that report ICS twenty-seven twenty-two, re prior drain petition, we received this information and the council points Brandon Widner of Spirit Associates Limited to prepare a report under section four of the Drainage Act for the prior drain.
All those in favor? Opposed. Carried. Our next report. Director of Financial Services Report, number one is uh Department of Financial Services twenty-nine twenty-two, which is respect to the Del Green. Comments or questions? If I could have a mover, oh, excuse me, um, Mr. Brooks.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to uh correct the last line of this report uh which reads, for this project, there are no costs for Central Logan. Uh, as part of this drain report, Central Logan is in fact assessed a cost at roughly twenty thousand dollars, which is budgeted through the twenty twenty-two roads operating budget.
Thank you for the clarification, Mr. Brooks. Questions or comments? If I can get a mover, please. Councillor Halpin, second or councillor Bachman?
Motion reads Mayor Sloan, moved by councillor Halpin, seconded by councillor Bachman, that report DFS twenty-nine twenty-two, we request for tenders twenty twenty-two seventeen Dell Drain, we received this information and the council accept the tender of Foods Excavating Limited for the twenty twenty-two seventeen Dell Drain in the amount of twenty two hundred ninety-seven thousand one hundred ninety-five dollars plus all applicable taxes.
All those in favor? Carried. Uh, moving to the next site on the Department of Financial Services thirty-two-two, which is the Vanderbrink Davis Drain. Comments, uh, Mr. Brooks?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, I would like to correct the last line of the report. Uh, Central Logan is assessed a a charge of approximately two thousand dollars for this project.
Hmm. Thank you, Mr. Brooks. Questions or comments from council? Seeing none, can I have a mover? Deputy Mayor Noble, second or councillor Watson?
The motion reads Mayor Sloan, moved by Deputy Mayor Noble, seconded by councillor Watson, that report DFS thirty twenty-two, we request for tenders twenty twenty-two twenty-nine Vanderbrink Davis Drain, we received this information and that council accept the tender of Van Bree Drainage and Bulldozy Limited for the twenty twenty-two twenty-nine Vanderbrink Davis Drain in the amount of eighty-two thousand two hundred and ninety dollars plus all applicable taxes.
All those in favor? Carried. Our next report is from the Director of Fire Rescue Services, um FS twelve twenty-two, the monthly alarm activities report, October, November, twenty twenty-two. Comments or questions from council? Or the chief? Pretty straightforward. Okay, if I could have a mover, please. Councillor Halpin, the second or deputy mayor Noble.
The motion reads Mayor Sloan, moved by councillor Halpin, seconded by deputy mayor Noble, that report FS twelve twenty-two, re-monthly alarm activities report for October twenty twenty-two and November twenty-two twenty-two, we receive for information.
All those in favor? Opposed. Carried. Our next report is from the Director of Asset Management Development Services, um, number thirty-three twenty-two, the October, November twenty-two monthly building reports. If uh council has any questions or is it a chance to take a look? I have a question, Mr. Perrin. Um, looks like we're going to be about um seventy-five percent, maybe eighty percent of last year's numbers. Is that fair?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. Is this a concern? Is this uh for going forward for your planning? Are you um, what are you thinking for twenty two? What is the, what are the applicants now for twenty twenty-three looking like?
Through you, uh, Mayor Sloan, at at this time, we know that it's going to uh slow down. Um, I would, you know, while we're lower than what we were in uh twenty twenty-one, as far as new housing starts, uh, the number of of permits that we're seeing for renovations is is actually going up. Uh, we're thinking that's probably based on interest rates where people are saying, you know what, I'll invest in my existing home, do some uh home improvements rather than uh purchase new homes. While it is, uh, the new home starts is down from uh twenty twenty-one, it's still uh higher than what we seen in in uh twenty nineteen in twenty twenty. So we're still, we'll say, on the upward side of the bubble. Um, keep in mind that in twenty twenty-two, uh, one of the permits was for the uh medium-rise four-story building at Kokomo. So while that's only one permit, that equates to fifty-six units. So so that that helps.
Thanks for the clarification, Mr. Perrin. Any other questions or comments? If I get a mover. Uh, councillor Bachman, seconded by deputy mayor Noble. Thank you.
Well, the motion reads Mayor Sloan, moved by councillor Bachman, seconded by deputy mayor Noble, that report AMDS thirty-three twenty-two, the October and November twenty twenty-two monthly building reports, we received this information.
Thank you. All those in favor? Moved. Uh, onto now, I'm a uh S Management Development Services three four two two, October, November, monthly bylaw reports. Ultimately straightforward. Any questions on that? Seeing none, could I have a mover, please? Councillor Halpin, second or councillor Connors?
The motion reads Mayor Sloan, moved by councillor Halpin, seconded by councillor Connor, that report AMDS thirty-four twenty-two, the October and November twenty twenty-two monthly bylaw reports, we received this information.
All those in favor? Opposed. Carried. Excellent number is three five two two, the Mini Tower Cellular Project. Mr. Perrin, did you want to comment on that at all?
Uh, if you like, uh, Mayor Sloan, I can give brief comment. Um, this project is uh for five mini towers, so uh, understanding that Industry Canada is the regulating body for the approval of of communication towers uh in the province or actually federally and that's uh covered under the Radio Communications Act. Their criteria uh applies to approvals being required from Industry Canada for any towers in excess of fifteen meters. So if it's fifteen meters or less than Federal Canada or Industry Canada does not uh uh provide approval. The municipality, we have a antenna sighting pro- protocol, which is appended to the report, which outlines what's required for a public consultation and public notification for um telecommunications towers that are covered by the uh Industry Canada uh Approval Authority and and the Radio Communications Act. All five sites are below five or fifteen meters um and uh would be owned by shared tower. Uh, they're requesting approval to be cited on municipally-owned property as outlined in the report. And uh they would be uh subject to an annual lease payment uh to the municipality uh for allowing those towers to be there. On the second page of of the report, there is a a rendering there that uh identifies what these towers look like. They're a monolithic pole uh painted white and then a small um cabinet at the base of it to house all the radio equipment. So um, in all intents and purposes, they're not any different than a utility pole uh that you would see uh on the on the on the streetscape. And uh, they are, uh, so they're, they own the tower, share a tower, and then they lease space to communication companies like Rogers or uh Bell. So this this program would include uh uh, the installation of fiber uh optic uh cabling to each one of these sites and then uh cellular communication and radios would be on top of the tower to uh beef up the the uh cellular service uh throughout. throughout Port Stanley. So this would cover the entire, entire built area of Port Stanley.
Thank you, Mr. Perrin. Any questions or comments? Counselor Halpin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was wondering about what the certain meters of the range is on each of these towers that is received and whether any conversation with shared tower about any other rural locations likes part of that.
The, the radius of connectivity depends basically on topography, what line of site. Port Stanley is problematic just because of the bluff in the valley. Approximately 250 to 300 meters approximately radius. Shared Tower has done the analysis based on the 5G system that they would be implementing on these towers, that it would cover everything in Port Stanley by these towers as proposed. As far as looking at other areas of the municipality, we have had, not had those conversations with Shared Tower at this point. They, they actually approached the municipality of Port Stanley based on conversations they had with clients, Rogers, for example, where they have issues.
Counselor.
Thank you. Now that dialogue has been opened about Port Stanley, is it possible for staff to raise that question?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, that's absolutely possible.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perrin. Counselor Halpin? Okay. Counselor Noble or Deputy Mayor Noble?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. There's no added cost to the end user on this, Lloyd?
Yeah, no, there would be no additional cost as we understand it to, if you're a subscriber of it from a cellular company, they're doing that as part of increasing their, their telecommunications network. There, there is a benefit to the municipality with these as well because we rely on cellular communications for things like monitoring some of our fire alarm panels, for example, at the, at the Kettle Creek Villa, where in the event that we have an alarm, then we rely on that cellular service and sometimes that can be sporadic as well as our parking meters utilize cellular service as well. And then just generally speaking for the public.
Thank you, Mr. Perrin. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, could I get a mover in a second or please? Deputy Mayor Noble and Counselor Bachman?
The motion reads, Mayor Sloan, moved by Deputy Mayor Noble, seconded by Counselor Bachman, that report AMDS 3522 Mini Tower Solid Project, Port Stanley be received for information and that council confirmed that the project is exempt from the municipality's antenna sitting protocol and that staff be directed to negotiate an agreement with Shared Tower for the construction of five mini towers as identified in report AMDS 3522 for consideration at a future meeting of council.
Excuse me. Thank you, Ms. Wilson. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda are bylaws. Ms. Wilson, we usually do this in aggregate, if you will. Is that correct? They're all done at once. So I would ask if anyone has any questions or comments on the bylaws that are presented, the 10 bylaws that are presented to us? Relatively straightforward. Does staff have any comments? Okay, seeing none, if I could have a mover, Counselor Halpin and a second or Counselor Connors. Thank you.
The first motion on the bylaws, Mayor Sloan, moved by Counselor Halpin, seconded by Counselor Connors, that bylaws 2729, 2744, 2746, 2747, 2748, 2749, 2750, 2753, 2756, and 2757, we read it first and a second time.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. All those in favor? Opposed, carried. Second motion. Could I get a mover for the second motion, please? I didn't see that. Apologies. Counselor Bachman and Deputy Mayor Noble?
Final motion on the bylaws, Mayor Sloan, moved by Counselor Bachman, seconded by Deputy Mayor Noble, that bylaws 2729, 2744, 2746, 2747, 2748, 2749, 2750, 2753, 2756, and 2757, we read a third time and finally passed.
All those in favor? Opposed, carried. Thank you. So moving on through public notice to motions and notice of motion, first one being a change of meeting dates to accommodate municipal conferences. Any questions from any of the council? Seeing none, if I could get a mover, please. Counselor Halpin and a second or Deputy Mayor Noble?
Motion reads, Mayor Sloan, moved by Counselor Halpin, seconded by Deputy Mayor Noble, that the council of the corporation of the municipality of Central Elgin modify the 2023 council schedule to accommodate 2023 municipal conferences as follows. January 23rd, 2023, regular meeting of council rescheduled to January 25th, 2023 at 7:00 PM. June 12th, 2023, regular meeting of council rescheduled to June 5th, 2023 at 7:00 PM. August 21st, 2023, regular meeting of council rescheduled to August 24th, 2023 at 1:00 PM.
Thank you. All those in favor? Opposed, carried. Excuse me. The next item on the agenda is with respect to the Roma Board of Directors. Counselor Halpin approached me in suggesting that we might want to have. Someone try for this role, if you will. Counselor Halpin, did you have any questions? Do you have any comments on this for the rest of the council?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So for the last term, our representative for District One at Roma has been former counselor Dennis Krevitz, and obviously he's no longer in that role. But he did tell me that he found that it was of great benefit to our municipality, not just to be represented by someone in District One generally, but to have someone from our municipality who had the opportunity to communicate directly with provincial level politicians on issues that were relevant for us and to sometimes see in advance upcoming grants and other things like that that pertains to our needs. As far as I can tell, it's more often a mayor than a counselor that ends up having that position. And certainly Mayor Sloan has more experience between being Central Elgin and Elgin County than most of us do. So being all new, I appreciate very much his willingness to go forward and try his hand at this for us.
Thank you, Counselor Halpin, and thank you for your engagement on this file and the help of former counselor Krevitz. And I'd be pleased to try and continue the good work that's been done thus far, if that's the direction of the council. If I could get a mover, Counselor Halpin and a second or Counselor, Counselor Connors?
Motion reads, Mayor Sloan, moved by Counselor Halpin, seconded by Counselor Connors, it resolved that the council of the corporation of the municipality of Central Elgin endorses Mayor Andrew Sloan for the position of Roma Zone Representative One for the 2023 to 2027 Roma Board of Directors.
Can I have the vote, please? All those in favor? Opposed, carried, and thank you. Moving to other business, council appointments to boards and committees. Questions or comments? Mr. Shipway?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Through you, Mr. Mayor. We're just looking for the appointments, the various third-party boards and committees, so that we can advise them and they can commence their orientation and meeting structure.
Thank you. And how's that usually done? We fill it out here? Is it done at this meeting or after?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Typically be done at this meeting. I know specifically the C conservation authorities are very eager to get orientation done and meeting scheduled. So it'd be great if we could do it here.
Okay, thank you. So we have our list and people that have put forward their, 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 their. Interest in being part of it. And we've gone through a number. And. I don't have it up on my screen. So just going through here, the ones that we do have, Deputy Mayor Noble has asked to be on the Kettle Creek Conservation Area, Kettle Creek Conservation Authority. Actually, do you have the list that I talked to you about, Mr. Shipway?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I do. Would you like me to go through it?
If you wouldn't mind, please, because my technology isn't giving me what I need right now. So your help is valuable. Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The Special Events Committee, tentatively Counselor Connors, Counselor Bachman, and Deputy Mayor Noble. Just keep going. Catfish Creek, Counselor Halpin. Kettle Creek, Deputy Mayor Noble. Port Stanley BIA, Counselor Graham. Kettle Creek Villa. Counselor Halpin, Counselor Graham, Mayor Sloan. Central Elgin Planning Advisory Committee, Mayor Sloan. Joint Accessibility Advisory Committee, Counselor Bachman. St. Thomas Cemetery Board. Deputy Mayor Noble, Elgin Primary Water Supply System, St. Thomas Secondary System and Port Burwell Secondary System, Counselor Watson, all those three separate boards and the Elgin Police Services Board, Mayor Sloan.
Thank you. I did want the opportunity to make sure that everyone's okay with that suggestion. If there are any questions or changes that wish to be decided now, I'd happy to take your, your, your thoughts. I did have for the joint X, but could you just repeat for me what you have for Joint Accessibility Advisory Committee?
Counselor Bachman.
Thank you. Comments, questions? Can I get a mover? Oh, I got a mover, please, for the, for the appointments, please. Counselor Halpin and a second or Counselor Bachman?
Motion reads, Mayor Sloan, moved by Counselor Halpin, seconded by Counselor Bachman, that council approved the attached list of council appointments to boards and committees for the 2022 to 2026 term of council.
Mr. Shipway?
Mr. Mayor, from a procedural standpoint, once this passes, if it passes, staff will send correspondence to the various third-party boards and committees and we will copy the respective member of council or members of council on them and then they will reach out and carry forward with the rest of the process for you. Okay?
Thank you. So we need to vote on it. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Next item by law to confirm the proceedings of council.
Mayor Sloan, if I could just.
Sorry.
Through you. I'm just wondering, under other business, if. I could make a motion or whatever the procedure would be through Mr. Shipway to defer the budget meeting?
Thank you, Counselor Graham. Mr. Shipway?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. That's up to council to procedurally go ahead and do.
Thank you. We have a meeting scheduled for tomorrow. Mr. Shipway, it's supposed to be at 10, is it?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, yes, tomorrow at 10 and then tentatively the 14th at 10 as well.
Okay, so what we're looking to do is, is to move those meetings until the new year. So we all have a little bit more time to look at the budget. I, as for specific dates, Counselor Graham, did you have any thoughts on that?
I would say after January 11th.
Comments? Seeing none, if we could move tomorrow's meeting to January the 11th, and at that point, we can discuss following meetings on the budget. Mr. Shipway?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. If that's the direction of council, we'll do that and we'll just provide notice that you're just deferring them until January. Is that the intent then?
Yes, if that's with council's approval.
Are there any parts of this?
Excuse me, Counselor Halpin, I didn't know if you're.
I apologize. Thank you. Are there any tenders or other pieces to this that need to be addressed before January?
Mr. Shipway?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I think generally staff would say it would be our recommendation to attempt to approve the budget promptly, just with the number of things. We have a significant tender closing on the 15th of December. However, normally the period on that tender for accepting it is long enough that we could get to the 11th.
Counselor Halpin?
Would it be useful to the council to do the initial meeting tomorrow as intended and then instead of doing a follow-up, the immediate following day to take some time and come back to that in January?
Counselor Connors?
I'm not in town tomorrow, so I will not be able to attend.
We have some issues with scheduling, so I think unfortunately, or we're going to have to move it to the 11th. That's okay with you, Counselor Halpin? Counselor Graham?
And sorry, if possible, if we could make it after the 11th instead of on the 11th?
Okay. 11th is a Wednesday, if I'm not mistaken. We're meeting on the Monday evening. Counselor Graham, did you have a particular date in mind?
Possibly January 16th. That would be the Monday night.
Council, any discussion on January the 16th for the budget meeting?
Do you think we'll be able to get through the entirety of a budget in a regular meeting?
Sorry.
Or I mean, if it doesn't matter to me if it's Monday during that day, the 16th, the Monday, and have Mr. Shipway schedule that?
Mr. Shipway, your thoughts on having an earlier meeting on the Monday, please?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. For the purposes of budget, staff would recommend that a meeting would commence at 10. It gives you a longer period of time to consider and to come back with everything.
Asking council if they have the availability on the Monday for 10 a.m. meeting?
We don't. We just realized.
No problem.
I have a medical appointment on the 16th.
Okay. Thoughts for the afternoon, Counselor Halpin? What time are you available on that date?
You mean, if we were to start in the afternoon on the 16th?
Say 1 o'clock.
I might be late arriving to it. I knew that I would be able to be here for the evening, but I just, it just occurred to me that. I could do the 17th.
We're now under the 17th. Council? With respect to county council on the Tuesday? Yeah. I don't have my schedule in front of me. Could we, Mr. Shipway, your thoughts on how we could confirm the actual timing after the meeting?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. If you could give us a half second to check Eldon County's meeting schedule, I think that'd be beneficial. Just with canceling it, it'd be beneficial to advise when that next one is.
Thank you. Mr. Shipway?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. It may be safer just to look at the 18th because we can't confirm the county schedule at this point in time.
Staff, sorry, Mr. Brooks?
I'm going to be busy.
Mr. Perrin? Mr. Shipway?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. That would indicate we could go forward for the 17th at 10 a.m. And I think, if I may, Mr. Mayor, if council has any additional information or anything required for the budget, just because we'll be halfway through January already, that if you let us know in advance, that we would be able to come prepared and provide you with that information, it would provide the opportunity to lessen the chance for further delays.
Thank you, Mr. Shipway, and I concur. For those who are planning on taking a look and doing the due diligence, it's been. Suggested, I hope that we can ask the questions of staff in advance so that we can have a productive session on that day. Thank you, Mr. Shipway. suggested. I hope that we can ask the questions of staff in advance so that we can have a, a productive session on that day. Thank you, Mr. Shipway. Ms. Wilson? Thank you. I'm gonna need a mover in a seconder. Counselor Graham and Counselor Halpin.
The motion reads, Mayor Sloan, moved by Counselor Graham, seconded by Counselor Halpin. The council requests deferral of the twenty-twenty-three budget meeting scheduled for December the thirteenth and December the fourteenth of twenty-twenty-two until Tuesday, January the seventeenth of twenty-twenty-three at ten A M.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. All those in favor? Carried. Lastly, a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council, bylaw two-seven-four-five. May I have a mover, please? Counselor Connors, seconder, Counselor Halpin?
Motion reads, Mayor Sloan, moved by Counselor Connors, seconded by Counselor Halpin, that bylaw twenty-seven, forty-five be read a first and a second time.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried? And for the second bylaw, if I could have a mover. Counselor Halpin and seconder Deputy Mayor Noble.
Motion reads, Mayor Sloan, moved by Counselor Halpin, seconded by Deputy Mayor Noble, that bylaw twenty-seven, forty-five be read a third time and finally passed.
All those in favor? Opposed? So carry. Our last item, if I could get a mover in a seconder on our adjournment. Counselor Bachman, Counselor Halpin?
Motion reads, Mayor Sloan, moved by Counselor Bachman, seconded by Counselor Halpin. That the regular meeting of council dated Monday, December the twelfth, twenty-twenty-two, be adjourned at eight twenty-three P M. And the next regular meeting of council be scheduled for Monday, January the ninth, twenty-twenty-three at seven P M.
All those in favor? And the meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much, and thanks to those who are watching online.